Call the city council meeting to order today's date. Today's date, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. This meeting is now in session. All right. Moving on, under adoption of the agenda, if council members wish to revise the agenda of the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before adoption of the agenda. Uh, will there be any outside of a closed session will add A three, A four, uh, to the agenda as it relates to closed session? Hearing none, seeing none. Like the intended motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Some of those are second.
Second.
Some of them are probably second, under discussion, under discussion, under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. I know I entertain a motion to go to closed sessions in reference to, um, North Carolina General Station, one thirty-eight tag, Christian, one forty-three tag, three eighteen point, A three. And four. A three and A four, that motion's on the floor, is it second?
Second.
Some of them are probably second, under discussion, under discussion, under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries, this meeting is now in closed session, if you would all step out with the exception of, uh, Mr. Pope and Trey Cash. All right, moving on to items of discussion, uh, item number one, strategic planning. David Bone from Eastern Carolina Council, whatever you're ready, David, you can just go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, uh, Ms. Manager, Mr. Attorney, staff, members of the public. First of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to, to be here tonight and to, uh, follow up based on our, uh, our meeting on, uh, January thirtieth. Uh, as you, uh, recall, uh, council had a strategic work session, we developed, uh, different, and I, there's a lot of information here, I'm not going to try to go over it all, but it's here in case we need to refer back to something, so I will try to be, uh, brief. Okay, all right. So, those were the goals that we, uh, looked at on January thirtieth, uh, reviewing the strategic planning goals of, for the past year. Conducting a analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Brainstorm potential projects and initiatives, uh, update the strategic planning goals, and discuss priorities and updating the strategic planning, uh, goal document. So, we discussed importance of a unified vision, that, you know, the greatest leaders mobilize others by coalescing people around a shared vision. Uh, we talked about the city's mission statement and the strategic planning goals that you've identified, uh, in the past. And, you know, with your strategic planning document, you know, your, your goal is to embrace the mission and ensure the policies, ordinances, and budgets. Support your, your mission, uh, that you've, you've already established. The strategic goals and action steps to be supported by the budget, allow the city to support the desires of the community, its residents, businesses, and visitors. So, that, that's already been established. Uh, we did, uh, some word cloud, word cloud exercises to kind of get, uh, blood flowing. Uh, we talked about the description of Kensington today, a lot of positive stuff. You know, the way the word cloud works, the more a word is, uh, repeated by different, uh, council members, the larger, uh, the, the word is. So, that shows kind of some themes that were developed with Kensington today. We did a similar exercise as far as your vision for Kensington tomorrow, uh, you know, prosperous, destination thriving, vibrant, forward, togetherness. Uh, so a lot, a lot of positive visions, uh, that you're already, you know, working on to, to bring to fruition. Uh, we reviewed the strategic goals, uh, and accomplishments, um, uh, uh, Ms. Rhonda, uh, manager and, and her staff developed these, uh, these updates about the strategic goals. And the, the current strategic goals, uh, you know, preservation, reduction of violent crime, uh, the, uh, cleaning up, um, I'm sorry, I'm, my, my, my eyesight is not what it can be, uh, cleaner, healthier community, housing, transportation, and building, uh, community relations. Um, and then, you know, the, uh, the, this manager and staff provided this information as far as what has been accomplished to date. Uh, and I won't go through that, you've got that in your, in your packets, and we discussed it on the thirtieth. So, then we did the, as I mentioned, the strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis. We talked a lot about, uh, you know, what that means, you know, setting the stage, you know, the strength, what does an organization excel at? And we focused on, you know, uh, the, the city as an organization, uh, weaknesses, what stops an organization from performing at its optimum level? Opportunities, what factors would give the organization a competitive advantage? And then threat, what factors could harm, uh, the organization and the community? So, we developed a list of, of strengths, uh, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and then you used stickers to identify your, your, your top thoughts as far as what those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats are. Be happy to go over those if you would like. Then we had a brainstorming session about potential projects and initiatives. So, I believe you've got this, uh, uh, in your packet. So, you know, some of the different, um, uh, potential, uh, projects and initiatives include, uh, the compensation study, uh, expanding review of city-owned properties, uh, periodic review of strategic planning documents, quarterly city newsletter, public-private partnerships in recreation, economic development, and housing, vacant building code enforcement downtown, regular engagement of community organizations, nonprofits, and churches to enhance communication and collaboration, a new city hall, engage in city, uh, the Kensington Housing Authority about its facilities, uh, placemaking, more attractive gateways, uh, building synergy between neighborhoods and downtown, uh, and safe pathways, develop career pathways for staff. Uh, so certainly, staff development was a, a key theme, uh, throughout the day. Uh, review, update the, the fund balance policy, opportunities, uh, in, in real property revaluation process, shared rebranding of community along with community partners and stakeholders, so, you know, developing those, further developing those, those partnerships was a, was a key theme as well. Uh, and then regular communication with legislative delegations and hiring of, um, lobbyists. So, and next, um, you know, we developed, um, the draft strategic planning goals, uh, for the upcoming year. And, you know, as I said, I, you know, listened to what your comments were, and it was great feedback, you know, saw certain themes, took some, um, some liberty as, as a writer to draft, uh, strategic planning goals based on, on, on your feedback. Um, and so, what, what I've done, uh, for your consideration, I've got this, uh, so focusing on, um, you know, five potential strategic planning goals. And we have, I believe in your packet as well, a draft document, um, for the strategic planning goals. And this was something that Ms. Barwick certainly wanted to have, and certainly something that, that you as council desired as well, to, you know, have as a, as a guiding document for future decisions, for the budget process, a- as well as additional, uh, uh, decisions as well. And, and also just to be transparent and to communicate with the public and, and your partners as well. So, um, this, uh, this draft document, it's got a, a cover letter from, uh, the, the manager, Ms. Barwick. It's got, uh, you know, just some background about the vision, uh, that you have, uh, for the future, the use of strategic planning goals. Um, it does have the, uh, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that, that you have identified as well. And then, the, um, uh, the priorities for the upcoming year as well. So, we've got, um, what we would like to do and accomplish today is finalize this document so you can, you know, use this as, as a document moving forward. So, um, we've got, so the, the five, uh, again, the five strategic planning goals, uh, that we drafted. One, uh, commitment to public safety, uh, building of, uh, two, uh, building a vibrant, healthy community. And what we did there was, um, combine, uh, two of the other goals that, uh, dealt with housing and then community development in, into one. Uh, five is a good number for strategic goals, and there was a lot of, uh, synergy between those two, so combined those in the, in the draft document. Third, the, uh, strategic transportation utility, infrastructure investment. So, previously, it was focused on transportation, but, uh, broadened that a little bit to include other infrastructure as well. Um, you know, just being mindful of, of, of trying to do everything we can with water and sewer infrastructures also. Number four, nurturing community relationships and proactive citizen communication. And five, improving the operational and financial strength of the city. So, what, uh, we'd like to see, uh, tonight is, is input from, from council, you know, is this, um, are you, uh, in agreement with this language, or is there some, some language that you would like to tweak as far as the five goals? And then, uh, what we would like to do is, um, we've got the different things that came up, uh, in our discussion last time, under each of these five strategic goals. And, uh, what, uh, Ms. Barwick would like to, to do is, if, if you could prioritize, you know, uh, potentially by consensus, you know, one, one or two of those for, for each category. In that way, she and her staff would have direction as she begins to work, or continues to work on development of her manager-proposed budget. So that, uh, you know, if opportunities arise in the, in the development of the budget, um, to put some resources to, uh, some of these items, she's got, you know, clear direction from, from you as board as far as what you would like to see in, in the draft budget. So, again, so we've got the, the five strategic planning goals, um, any, any additional feedback from, from council on the, uh, the draft five parties?
So, if you all recall during, well, first, thank you, Mr. David, for coming back and sharing with us today. Um, I, I do really appreciate you joining us for that session last month and, um, the continued guidance and input that you're putting into this plan for us. Um, I, I do still think that there's still some room for us to define these a little bit more, or maybe, to me, these five goals, if we're calling them goals, are more focus areas. Like, I, I think that's what I would use to describe what these five things are on the screen now. These are focus areas that the city wants to, you know, address or show that we have a commitment to these particular areas. But, you know, one of my criticisms during the, the training session we had last month was that I felt that we could be more strategic, we could develop more measurable and tangible definitions of, of what these goals or action steps that the city is going to take. And that's still, I think, my, my desire. Uh, I do think the individual kind of strategies that we have listed under these areas in the document are nice and actionable things, but, um, again, I, I still think there's a little bit more work we want to do to hone this in a little bit more. And particularly, one thing that I've been thinking about is if we are planning for these to be our five-year strategic goals, there's, you know, some things that are a little bit more manageable, we might get done this year. Um, there are some bigger projects, I think one of the things we discussed in that meeting or came up by someone in that meeting was a new city hall. And, you know, that might be a ten or twenty-five-year project, like, so, you know, there, I, I want us to just figure out now that we have this five-year timeline of what we want to focus on. And I think the purpose of this conversation is to try to figure out what things want to narrow down for Rhonda and the staff to focus on in terms of this year's budget. That we may just want to consider how can we make them more tangible, more measurable, so that you, we're, we're shooting big, but still focusing in on these focus areas. I think that, that more properly, I guess, describes them to me, in my opinion.
Well, and, and we, we do have, um, have those, and so, you know, certainly would like to, uh, uh, review those real quick. And as, as we suggested, um, you know, Ms. Barwick would like to get some, um, some feedback from, from the council as far as what your priorities may be for, for the upcoming year. So, a- as we discussed, uh, Councilmember Sutcliffe, and thank you for your comments, um, you know, certainly, um, you know, having more definitive, um, goals, um, you know, and, uh, you know, as far as expectations, timetables, and so forth, certainly that is the ideal. You know, this is a work in progress, uh, this is, uh, taking what you had as a document, uh, this past year and, and making some progress, uh, giving staff some direction. Uh, this is a lea- living, breathing document. And, um, you know, certainly, um, you know, something that can be adjusted and revised moving forward. Um, I, I think what the, the manager is seeking, uh, not trying to put words in her mouth, but again, just to, um, you know, continue along the, the path, you know, and trying to continue to make some progress, um, and, and get some direction, some clarity, uh, as far as budget priorities for the upcoming budget year. And then, you know, certainly opportunity to continue the conversation to further refine it. So, um, if, so, shall we go back and, um, just seeking what, uh, how the council would like to proceed? Any, any suggestions for tweaking that as far as just general, uh, priorities or, or focus areas?
I was going to, uh, offer David, you had a slide that talked about possible projects, seemed to be a little bit more detailed, that might get the juices flowing for some action items for this coming budget. And as David said, that's what we're looking for, you know, we want to address everything, but to be realistic, you know, we have to take it one budget year at a time. And I just would like to know of all the, the great ideas that we shared, uh, how can we break it down into, into action steps for this coming budget year? So that when we're balancing the budget and we're choosing between A and B, if A is something the council has expressed is a priority, then A stays in and B is perhaps cut.
So, this, this is a general list for, for all, um, of the five areas? And then, what we've got is, uh, the, the same list, you know, categorized under each of the, the five areas. So, um, what's your pleasure? Any, any, any suggested tweaking, and Scott can, uh, you know, exit out and we can make some
I think.
Changes on the fly for a couple minutes, if you, if you've got time, or, uh, how would you like?
I think that we could, we could look at this at a later date to
Okay.
Make those changes, um, and then we move forward, um, the council, I think that we could do that. Right now, I think those five is a start, but we need to add, add to and try to strategize on, on what actual items we want to put in place for this budget year.
So, would you like to go over the, the subsections for each of these five areas real quick and try to pick one or two? All right, so commitment to public safety, uh, support the, the mayor's crime task force to develop crime reduction plan. Secondly, to, for city council to hold town hall meetings to host dialogue with citizens. Three, support the, the police department's efforts to train officers and respond to mental health challenges, partner with the county mental health providers on a crisis response team. Uh, and, uh, additionally, focus on employee retention to ensure institutional knowledge. So, are there, you know, one or two of those that, that kind of speak to you more, uh, as far as a priority for the upcoming year?
Focus on, uh, employment retention, I think is one out of that category. And I think we could probably do within, uh, upcoming year, I think.
The mental health piece as relates to the law enforcement respa- law enforcement response, crisis response type team, the mental health piece, um, I think is very important.
You know, and, and some of these may not take as, uh, as much allocation of funding, maybe more, you know, staff reports, staff resources. So, I'm sure, you know, there, there may be some opportunities to do more than one or two, but just, you know, trying to get some general, uh, you know, feedback so that we, uh, we can, I can work with the, the manager and, and we can update this document for further consideration.
I mean, uh, and all of them are important, I think.
Yeah. Right.
So, Mayor, if I may,
Yeah.
Um, I, and I, I think, and I, I think I was under the impression that we would receive this document, you know what I'm saying, compiling, you know, the work that we did on, um, that strategic planning day, that we would then take this document and that we would, would study it. Because I, I do think that the ultimate goal, um, was to be able to put them as, as, as SMART goals. So, you know, that we could get those goals that we're focusing on, how do we measure the accomplishment of the goal? You know, who are the individuals, you know what I'm saying, responsible? You know, I, I think, I think that this is what we wanted and we were expecting. And that once everything that we discussed has now been put in layman's terms, it's been made, you know, like into a concise document, that now we have the opportunity to go and look at the work that we did and then be able to fine tune it in preparation, um, for budget season. And so, I, I, I guess my concern is, um, I did feel like I didn't know that we would do this here, uh, you know, that we might be called together for, you know, another think tank.
And to that point, I think, I think the process has gotten blurred a little bit, whereas this is, to, to me, what we're doing, and what we're doing tonight, this test, isn't necessarily strategic planning, I think this is maybe developing budget priorities. And so, the fact that, the, the terms a little bit blur- have gotten a little bit blurry, because I, I truly believe, I've been saying it, I think multiple members of this council have said, we wanted a strategic plan for the city. I think we all kind of went into this with different ideas of what that strategic plan looks like. Uh, but a strategic plan needs to be more than just focused on this single budget year. And I would appreciate us investing a little bit more time in flushing out these goals some more, because it's hard, like even from this, all four are extremely important. The first two don't have too much of a budgetary impact, we already got the crime task force, we got our own place, we got Rick Centers, that we can host a council meeting or a town hall meeting for free. The last two are things that have a budgetary impact, you know, how we provide additional training or how we retain employees. So, you know, so I think there's a, I, I don't want us to get lost in the sauce of what's the strategic planning idea or process, and what's the budgetary priority process? And if that's what we're doing more, it's just developing budget priorities, I just, I want us to be honest and say that's what this process actually is, rather than a long-term strategic goal. Because when I think of strategic plan, I'm thinking about how we're planning for Kensington, not just five years from now, but twenty-five, thirty, fifty years from now. Like, what is the long-term vision, what is our shared vision for the city and how we get there?
I, I, I agree. Because out of, like, it's like, you know, out of the strategic plan, you know, if, like, for this is the five-year goal, you know what I'm saying, there are things on this thing, you know, that are on our think list, that we're not going to be able to accomplish this budgetary year, you know, which is the importance of, like, the timelines and things of that nature.
Sure, certainly understand, and, and, you know, as, as we, uh, council discussed, I mean, I think this would be replacing, uh, theoretically, you know, your current document that is a five-year, um, strategic list of, of, uh, of priorities. So, I think that the desire is to still maintain five years, but then to give the manager and, and staff a little bit more direction. So, I, you know, I certainly understand, I know the manager would, would love to have some, some budget priorities for, so if, if, if we could take a couple minutes and just go over these real quick and, and give her, you know, that feedback, I think she would appreciate that. So, the next one, um, building a, a vibrant, healthy community. First of all, uh, expand review of city-owned properties inside and outside the city limits, including FEMA buyout properties. And I know that was a, a big, uh, priority for, uh, for council. Strengthen the code enforcement efforts and collection of fees and fines, strengthen blight enforcement and minimum housing code enforcement, address vacant building downtown, uh, help create a property owner, landlord, tenant association, and improve communication and improve housing. Continue to evaluate, develop, and re- reimbursement agreements with developers, evaluate city involvement in workforce, uh, affordable housing development opportunities, and continue to explore mixed-use housing opportunities with a particular focus on, on downtown properties. So, again, all these are, are important things for the city moving forward, but are there, for, for the manager's, uh, request, uh, are there a couple that kind of stand out, uh, for you moving forward? For the upcoming year? They're all important.
And, uh, Mayor, if I could just jump in, I think what I'm hearing from the council is you'd like to have more, uh, more intense workshops to really flesh out and make assignments and make measurable goals and all that, and we can certainly, uh, talk with David and, and get some extensions and some additional workshops and, and of that
Sure.
Really dig into it. Uh, the timing, and, and we don't have to rush, but, uh, the departments will be submitting their budgets shortly, they'll be starting working on their budgets shortly. Uh, they usually get that in February, and they work on it, and they get it back to us, I think it's, uh, April, is it? And so, it, we are on a, on schedule for that, which is, which is fine, and strategic planning is extremely important, and we need to do it right. But I just thought, since we had these goals, if you knew now something you'd like to see, just of the, the, maybe the, the low-hanging fruit that we could make sure we include in just this first year, then we'll roll it right into our budget conversations while at the same time developing a more detailed, more measurable strategic plan for the next five years.
And, and I know, uh, Ms. Manager and, and her staff, you know, if, if other opportunities become available to address some of these other ones, even if it's not on your priority list for, for this coming year, they will certainly take advantage of those opportunities and, and work with you on that as well. So, are there a couple from, uh, this second area that, that kind of speak to you as far as a priority for, uh, next year?
I mean, I think all those are, are good. All of them. Uh, it's just that, you know, us, us having a more detailed conversation in, in the future has placed all, all of this, but not currently, right now.
Okay.
Um, I think that all of them are important, I think those are things that were touched on or talked about, each one of those items. Now, we just got to figure out how to incorporate it into what we want it to be, look like, uh, moving forward, so, I believe there's another conversation to be had, um, um, to talk about it.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like, would you like for David, since he's here, just to run through for the audience, the, the work that you've done so far, just run through the last few?
Absolutely.
And then what we'll do is we'll get back, David, and we'll reschedule some more actual workshops that they can really dig into the details.
Perfect. Okay. All right, so, the, the next one, um, was, um, uh, strategic transportation utility, uh, infrastructure investment, developing a fixed route and/or on-demand transportation system, explore the acquisition of alternative fuel vehicles, infrastructure, and resources. Uh, next, build upon the North Carolina Global Trans Park and support the development of a local transportation hub to include rail service. Next, to pursue state and federal grant opportunities to improve not only transportation, but water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. Uh, next, nurturing community relationships and proactive citizen communication. Enhance council members' community engagement, uh, review the list of present boards and commission, I think that's being done on an ongoing basis. Uh, continuing development of legislative goals and engagement with legislators, and that was one of the things that we talked a, a good about, a good, a good amount about, uh, about, uh, nurturing that relationship with the legislatures and, uh, uh, working with them. And of course, we're having a, ECC's hosting a legislative breakfast, uh, right here in Linnor County in La Grange on Monday. And, uh, hopefully, uh, uh, some of you will be able to attend that. Next, develop regular ongoing meetings between the city council, county commissioners, and school board. I think, you know, in the past, there was discussions about, uh, working with the county, I believe the, the school board was a new addition to that, and, um, you know, certainly enhanced that conversation. City council represent- representation and community organizations, I believe that's already been evaluated on an ongoing basis. Um, and developing a quarter- quarterly newsletter, that was one thing that really came out, uh, as far as, uh, the discussion. City council wanting to be more proactive, uh, to communicate with, uh, with the community, and they saw that as a, as a, a good opportunity to move forward. And then lastly, improving the operational and financial strength of the city. Reviewing the, and updating the city fund balance poss- policy, realizing that the fund balance is used for matches on a lot of grants, and, you know, some of the goals, uh, involve grants. And then undertaking an employee compensation study, that was certainly, uh, one thing that the council spoke a, a lot about, uh, in the last work session, was that, you know, how much you value the staff and the expertise that they bring to the table, uh, the value that they bring to the table, and that you want to make sure that you do everything you can to, uh, uh, keep them here as, uh, contributing members of, of your organization. as, uh, contributing members of, of your organization. So certainly that was a, a key takeaway. And, uh, I appreciate that recognition, uh, from council. So, uh, those were the five things. Um, and so, um, you know, I'll be glad to, to work with, uh, Ms. Marwick and, and, uh, as far as exploring options to continue the conversation. Um, and I believe, uh, Ms. Marwick, I think they have not only the PowerPoint slides, but they've got this as well?
They do not have the PowerPoint, but if you'll make sure, I think you've already sent it to me. I will send it to them.
Perfect.
So they'll have that and they can do some, you know.
But they, they do have, they do have this.
They do have that. It's in their agenda.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
And Mayor Harding.
Yes, sir.
What I would probably recommend for staff is to, the list that is included in the agenda packet, to just align those with potential opportunities in the budget this year. Cause I think some, several of them things our staff are already working on. Uh, so that is already a, a great help. Um, again, as I mentioned, some of them are lofty that probably don't need to be considered in the budget this year. That's further down the line. But just see how there's some synergy between what the department's already working on and what we've identified as goals for the city.
And thank you, Councilmember Suggs. And as you said earlier, a lot of those are not really, uh, big financial commitments.
Right.
But they're, they're just a focus for our staff.
Yeah, I, I think, um, Councilman Suggs nailed it, that, you know, there's, the, the strategic planning goals, short-term, twenty-five to thirty, and then when we start looking ten to twenty years, um, the strategic planning goals. But you're all, but what you're asking for immediately is budget request. And so as Councilman Suggs was saying, um, for department heads, you know, to look at what we have and start aligning, you know what I'm saying, the projects that they're currently working on, or that they know that they're in need of. And then, and then possibly for the council members, for us to be able, um, to come up, you know what I'm saying, with things that we would like to see done in the city. And then to be able to put them under which five of those categories that they fall in. And then that way, you know what I'm saying, you have, you know, this, this work being done of what we desire, almost kind of like a quote wishlist. The department heads are working on what is necessary. Um, and then we then come back to the table and look at what is aligned.
Again, thank you, and I, I look forward to continuing the conversation with Ms. Marwick.
Thank you, uh, David. And all those that, uh, contributed. Um, our number two, economic development properties, uh, they're at the blunt.
Alright, good evening, Council. Um, there have been several discussions and, um, some requests concerning some properties that are listed on our economic development list. And so that list is included in your meeting package. Staff is just seeking guidance for council concerning the properties on the list and what steps do we need to take next as far as advertising? We know that we have two properties, um, that were definitely in discussion, five fourteen and five oh two, East Bryce Street. Do we want to start advertising? Do we wanna, what do we want to do?
Uh, I believe the, uh, the conversation was, uh, for those two properties to be advertised. Uh, taking off the, uh, economic development list and put for, uh, upset bid process.
Just the, those two properties?
Yes, and of course, the conversation that we had in the past, unless council has anything, any further discussion as relates to, uh, those properties.
In terms of your, your general request, Ms. Blunt, uh, I think what I would like to see, since we set these properties aside from our general upset bid list, um, you know, now that we know that there's interest in some of the properties, there's interest in people developing and doing things with properties here in Kinston, um, what might be helpful is depending on you and your staff capacity. But, um, if we maybe created a, put this list back on the website and maybe even added images or something like that. Um, but I do think it would be imperative upon the council to develop a framework of what we would like to see these properties used for or what we would like for people to provide us with when they have interest in these properties. Because as you all recall, these are properties that we said, we didn't just want going to anybody on the upset bid, upset bid list. We want there to be some type of economic development benefit to the community for these properties. So, um, I think we're at a point now where we could use some more advertising for this particular list to put it out there for the general public. So people interested in building, buying, doing whatever in Kinston can see that list. Uh, but also for us as a council to develop similar to the policy we created for the upset bid program, uh, to create a similar policy or, or similar, at least guidance so our staff can know, uh, this is what a potential buyer needs to provide the city in order for this property to be considered. And they need to be clear and measurable with the economic impact of whatever their purchase would be, you know? If they are creating X, Y, Z amount of jobs, because, um, to go through with the economic development purchase, they have to have some type of economic development, uh, impact to the community.
And that's, uh, I echo those sentiments. That's, and that's in relation to the economic development properties as to what you're going to do with the property prior to, um, the purchase or the agreeing from the council as it relates to that particular property on the economic development side. Any further discussion from the council?
Mayor, just, just some clarity. So we, are we taking five fourteen, five oh two off and putting it in the upset bid process? And if we do that, are we requiring in the upbid, upset bid process more clarity on what they're planning on doing with the property?
So at the discretion of the council, um, I believe that, uh, well, uh, the conversation we had initially was not to do so. Um, but, uh, it's at the discretion of the, the council as to how we would like to proceed with, with that, uh, with items in the upset bid process, um, moving forward. Is the, uh, any further recommendations as it relates to the properties, uh, and the upset bid process? Is any recommendations, uh, at the present? Alright, hearing none, seeing none. Now moving on to those two parcels, of those particular properties, um, is there consensus of the council, uh, to move forward with those two properties, uh, to move to the upset bid process?
Could we just state for the record the reason we're moving those to the upset bid process?
Yes, sir, for the record. Uh, the city council, uh, well, the council had a conversation that, uh, relates to those two properties. There's potential economic development, um, moving forward. And hadn't had anyone to, uh, actually look at purchasing for over thirteen, uh, I believe plus years. And I believe today, uh, individuals, the council wanted to see, uh, it put it up for upset bid process versus, uh, being on the economic development piece or aside for us, uh, on development on that particular property. So today, uh, those two parcels, um, wanted to see a move forward on a potential economic development piece. Um, or have someone to, uh, actually bid on them that, that are, are wanting to. Uh, Mr. Attorney, you may interject, however you may.
Just, uh, clarification. Do, do we still have an offer on those two properties from Mr. Laws?
We had a proposal, not necessarily offer. So, um.
I thought, I thought at one point he had offered to buy the properties.
Yes, to buy it under the economic development part, not as far as the upset bid part. Which kind of leads into the question, what the upset bid policy? It only says a percentage of the value of the land.
Right, fifteen percent. I thought he had offered ten thousand dollars.
He did to purchase the land, but now we're not purchased, we're not offering it as a purchase. He has to go through the upset bid process.
Right, right. And that's why I wanted us to be clear for the record that the council, this, there is no reason for us not to just be upfront. We did receive some interest for that particular property and that's why we were moving it, we're moving it to the upset bid process. Um, so one, I want us to be upfront with that, but two, just making sure that we understand that based on the policy that this council voted on and approved, that he can end up with the property through the upset bid process, anybody can know with the property through the upset bid process. And so just stating for the record, why are we removing those properties off? And I don't, you know, that'll be a whole other discussion about the upset bid process and policy. The question tonight was about the economic development list.
And, and what properties to move off or, or, or not. So, um, that question is on the, on the floor. Um, and just needed consensus as to what we want to do, uh, moving forward with those two properties. Um, enter into the upset bid process, um, or keep it for economic development. So that's the question tonight as it relates to those two properties. Uh, because we did have some, some folks interested, interested in purchasing, uh, those particular properties. Uh, whether they purchase them or not now during the upset bid process is neither here nor there. But, um, they will be, it'll be going through the upset bid process if we so choose to, uh, do that tonight.
I'm sorry, go ahead. And so, back to the, the question that was asked, is there the request, or can we put the request in if it's an upset bid process of what is to be put on that property?
Mr. Attorney, you can interject on stipulations as it relates to, uh.
Yes, you can impose restrictions on what could be done with it. But you, you don't, it, it's a little bit of cart before the horse, I, I think. Because if we don't have a pending offer on those properties, then we don't have an upset bid process to, to initiate. We need an offer for the council to, uh, authorize an upset bid process to go forward. I mean, you could authorize them to come off this list, I suppose, but, but then what happens? We, we need an offer on these properties to do an upset.
I got it, okay.
Mr. Mayor and City Attorney, I think if we take these properties off of that list and Mr. Laws, he, he made a, a motion or attempt to buy before. And if he's aware of, of it being off of economic development, I think he would put another bid in. But at least give them the opportunity to do that. And then that would open up the upset bid process and we would take it from there.
Yeah, that would be the process. The other thing to also consider, since we have received an offer before for a specific amount for this property, Mr. Attorney, can't we also set a minimum upset bid even beyond our policy if we want it to?
Yes, absolutely. You could also instruct us to, to go ahead with an advertisement if we receive that minimum offer before your next meeting.
Uh, Mr. Suggs, do you have a recommendation?
I didn't ask for this, so I don't have a recommendation.
Okay. I was waiting to, to hear there. Uh, if there was a recommendation as it relates to that, and I see it's not for, um, anyone on the council. Alright?
Mr. Mayor, would it be out of, out of the norm, since Mr. Laws put in a bid one time before, to, to reach out to see if his bid still was staying or if he was willing to put in another offer and, and then go from there? Well, I say, yes, proceed with that process then.
Alright. Is there a consensus of the council as it relates to, uh, um, reaching out to the individual to see if he would like to place a bid for the property?
Is there a minimum amount or no minimum?
Uh, no, ma'am. Um, out of the current, it wasn't recommended. Anything from the council as it relates to, uh, reaching out to see if, uh, the individual would like to submit a, uh, a bid and there's not a minimum bid outside of the process?
And I would just say also, let's make sure we do the same thing we did with any other properties. It needs to go on the list for upset bid on the website. Um, advertise for anybody else interested, um, because it does not need to look or appear at all that we're providing any favoritism to any particular member of this community.
Thank you much.
So, for clarity, we just put the properties on the website, but the actual upset bid goes in the paper?
It's the, yeah, the same upset bid process?
Right, once we receive, so.
It's the same process that we would go through with any other um, parcel of land that is not listed as economic development.
Which would be fifteen percent of the actual property value of the property, of the parcel? Any further discussion as it relates to this, uh, these properties? Alright, hearing none, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Blunt, moving on to, you ready to move on to item number three? Um, which is report on vape and tobacco shops in the city of Kinston.
Okay, so on January seventh, council asked for a report of vape shops in the city as well as ordinance from other municipalities referencing such land uses. And I must give kudos to the planning department, because the community development worker, uh, planner and the zoning enforcement officer and myself, we got together, did a lot of research and held weekly meetings and came up with a wonderful report to give to you. Stat, uh, council, you should, all should have a printed copy of the full detail of the report. So once we got together and conducted some research, um, we decided that when we were looking at vape and tobacco shops, we also needed to include convenience stores. Because sometimes convenience stores, a lot of their products that are sold are towards vape and tobacco products as well as sundries. So you'll see later in the list that convenience stores are also included. So I just want to give a real quick history about vapes. Um, vapes derive primarily from electronic cigarettes, which were created to mimic and look like and feel like and, um, inhale like cigarettes. But for those that were trying to avoid all the toxicities that were affiliated with smoking at the time. So over time, they have progressed to devices such as the ones you see on the screen and even to electronic pipes. Research says that most adult vape users started because they were trying to quit smoking. And so your question may come about, why are we going into the history of the vape? Well, to let you know that there were eighty-two million electronic cigarette vape users in twenty-twenty-one and the numbers are not decreasing, they are increasing. And so as there's demand, there will be supply. So our current standards, when we're talking about vape and tobacco shops, we just classify them, interpret them as sales of goods, merchandise and equipment, whether it's with or without outside storage and the, display of goods. So on the screen, you see our table of uses as it stands. Those uses are permitted and our general business be one, our central business be two, also in our, um, shopping center, SC. And then when it comes to with outside storage, you get into the special use permits that are in our industrial areas. Um, so if we were to receive a request for a zoning permit for a new shop, we could classify this as just sales of goods. Currently, we have no supplemental regulations. So that means if the zoning district fits, they can go in it. We also did, um, some study about other municipality regulations. And within your meeting package, you have that. We, we looked at cities that were at least within fifty-five miles of Kinston or had a comparable population as we do. There were seven total that we looked at and six out of the seven had definitions and separations. Many cities prohibit these establishments, the vapes, the tobacco shops and hookahs from being near schools, daycare centers, parks, churches, residential zones and other youth-focused facilities. Several also enforce minimum distances to prevent clustering. And you will see that it looks like, what it looks like clustering in a minute. Some cities even required a detailed site plan, as well as required the establishment to obtain a special use permit. So what does that look for, look like as far as general statutes? Well, in general statutes, the General Assembly has strict regulations on age restriction. So the federal law says that you cannot sell, um, tobacco, tobacco products to someone under the age of twenty-one. However, the state of North Carolina says you can't sell them to someone under the age of eighteen. They also have, um, a lot of oversight of dispensaries. So you know, when we talk about dispensaries, right now, we're talking about. So you know, when we talk about dispensaries right now, we're talking about hemp dispensaries. Well, they have a lot of specific conditions and sales and dis- distribution, uh, that are tightly governed and controlled for dispensaries. As far as comprehensive lic- licensing requirements, businesses that are dealing in tobacco and alcohol, controlled substance and hemp must comply with various licensing laws as right now as well. And then there's potential compliance challenges for business owners. Because they may have multiple layers, they may have, you know, they're selling alcohol, they're selling vapes, they're selling tobacco. So you got layers of regulations on top of one another. And it's for the business owner, they must stay, um, informed and compliant to all of those legal issues. So what are some of our issues and concerns when we talk about the vape and tobacco shops in the city of Kinston? First of all, we talk about the quantity. Right now, vape and tobacco alone, we have twenty in the city limits. Locations, they're mainly located on two of our major thoroughfares, Vernon Avenue and Queen Street. As far as police incidents, K P D has reported that there have been sixteen burglaries, twenty-six, twenty-six disturbances, forty-seven suspicious persons slash vehicles, fourteen thefts and thirty-five trespassing violations. And appearance, and I think that's the one that gets everybody. You have flashing lights that are distractions, you have window and door coverage. Either are mostly covered with perforated vinyl, which means if you're in the store, you can see out, but if you're outside a store, you can't see in. And that, um, could be prohibiting for customers because you know, if you're going into the shop, you might want to know what's going on in the shop before you get in there. Same to make you sure that it's not a public safety issue. So when we talk about locations, all the little dots, the little black dots are where our tobacco and vape shops. And it's almost like a T, Vernon Avenue and Queen Street. Also in your meeting package, and I know it's small on the screen, but you all have a printed copy, is a list of all the establishments that staff noted as either tobacco or vape. And like we talked about convenience stores, we also identified the cigar lounge that we have. And we identified the three, um, vape and hemp dispensaries that we currently have in the city. This is just a couple of photos we're going to go through as far as the exterior of some of these establishments. So you noticed the window coverage? Of course, it's not a video, so you don't know that the lights are streaming, but they are flashing different colors, sometimes racing each other. I pointed this out because this is actually a tobacco shop, but it is in compliance. There is not more than twenty-five percent of the window coverage, they don't have lights around their windows. But they're still yet a tobacco shop, so it can be done. This is how it looks on the inside. They're packed with products. And if you notice the picture on your left shows the smoking apparatus that you can also buy. One of the regulations that we looked at as far as green bill was concerned is that they separate, um, their tobacco shops from those that just have tobacco products and those that have actual smoking apparatus. So now we're at next steps, and this is where we need to get some direction from council. Um, we've given three options and of course, you're more than welcome to come up with some, but I felt that it was only becoming that staff do give you some options to consider. Option one would be create some regulations. And in creating regulations, um, I am a big component about public input. I think the publisher have some say so. So that would include public input, creating land use definitions, designating zoning districts where these are permitted and establishing separation requirements. Option two may just continue as, as we're doing. We'll continue to interpret them as sales of goods and merchandise and equipment. We'll continue to have them in the existing zoning districts where they are and we'll just keep going like we're going. And then opera, option number three would be a moratorium. And this is where I'm definitely going to have to lean on the attorney. Because we could, we're offering as a suggestion to have a temporary moratorium, receive public input and present results to council in a future meeting. Like I said, we will work with the city attorney's office to make sure we do everything decently and in order. Bad thing right now, council, is that if a tobacco shop finds a location, they can literally just open up. We do not have a business registry of any sort. And so unless they're asking for a sign or they need to do some work to get a building permit, we would never know that they're in the location until there's a problem. So, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Councilwoman Solomon for the suggestion. This is our report on the vape and tobacco shops.
So, um, just a quick question, what, what is, um, Attorney Colley, a temporary moratorium? What is that?
Yeah, uh, became much more stringent. Um, there is now a detailed process that's required to impose a moratorium. Uh, it, and it, it's one, it's one process if your moratorium is going to be sixty days or less. And it's another much more, um, much broader notice process if your moratorium is going to exceed sixty-one days. And there are some, uh, required statements that have to be included as a part of a moratorium. Uh, you have to identify the problems ne- necessitating the moratorium, what courses of action, alternative to a moratorium were considered by the council. How the moratorium will address the problems or conditions uh, leading to the imposition of the moratorium, uh, of course, the dates for the moratorium. Statement why the moratorium, uh, duration is reasonably necessary. Uh, a statement of the actions and the schedule for those actions proposed to be taken by the local government during the moratorium. So it, it's a bit involved to impose a moratorium, but, um, but you do have the authority to do so. The process varies depending on the length.
So on average, what would, what would be the length of the process? Just?
I don't know that there is an average. I think it depends on the nature of the problem and what the council might perceive as the, as the cure.
Yeah, so when, when I think about this, um, you know, like they're popping, they're, they're popping up left and right and, and you know, the question is like, gosh, where, where is there any more space for one, you know what I'm saying, to be established? But yet we find that they're still appearing. Um, you know, one of the, the, the major concerns that we didn't, you know, clearly spell out, um, but it is referenced is, you know, saying the use of, of children, you know, um, and the accessibility that our children have, um, to these vapes. I, I, I do feel like if we can look into this process of the moratorium, because if you're telling us that we have an opportunity to put a freeze on it, um, while we're putting a freeze um, on the establishment of more vape shops and we begin to work on, um, number one, um, that's the right start. And it's also the right start because the issue is, is actually deeper, you know, than what any municipality can do. But it's the right start, which goes back to our legislators who, you know, I mean, we're going to need their help to go in as it pertains to the monitoring, um, you know, of, of these stores. And so like we're, we're, you know, that's a great start. Um, and it would be something, um, to invite, um, our legislators to, um, to hear the public comment, you know, on, you know, the requests, you know what I'm saying, as we began small, but for them to look, move in a larger and a more effective way.
Mr. Jim, in order to do a, sorry.
Also, I would just like some clarity, clarity about what is needed in order to open one of these shops?
As it stands right now, nothing. But a space, that's all they need is a space.
Because of the zoning.
Yeah.
See, I had two questions, one from Mr. Jim, to do a moratorium, we would still have to have a public hearing at least, right?
Correct.
Right, okay. And for the moratorium, since we, we don't have anything in our U D O simply defining a vape or a tob- or a tobacco shop, do we?
No.
So since we don't have any, would we'd have to pass at least the definition first in order to say this is the definition? Or would that just be a part of the moratorium?
I think it'd be part of the moratorium ordinance, uh, until it was defined differently by your, whatever your fix is as a result of the moratorium.
Also, uh, also could we also look at regulations and restrictions also as it relates to, um, moving forward after the moratorium? Um, or we can work on that simultaneously to figure out, okay, how do we want to regulate? Um, you know, what restrictions can we put in place?
Yeah, that's, that's really the purpose of a moratorium.
Right.
Is to give you time to figure out what it is that needs to be done.
That's what.
Mr. Attorney and Chief, how are we gonna enforce a moratorium? That, that's my question. Uh, we're short on police, uh, we're overworking our police. A T F is not going to come in. So how do we enforce or know that the moratorium is actually working if we put it in place?
It would be a zoning enforcement.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a public safety police enforcement. It would be a, our enforcement be finding them and.
Planning and zoning.
And, and the good thing about it is that the benefit of the moratorium is that you can start telling people that you have one. So those that are leasing out properties will know you cannot lease your property out to these people because the city is under a moratorium to establish the standards for a vape and, and tobacco shop. So it's kind of letting them know, don't, don't, don't do that.
The code enforcement piece will be, uh, interesting, yeah.
You know, another option may be, uh, take one of these examples that, um, Ms. Blunt has found from other communities and, uh, go ahead and, and adopt it.
Uh, I think we can, uh, take a look at adopting and creating, uh, to make it fit for us.
And not use, not try to use a moratorium if you, if you find something that.
Well, that would be option one. You could just, you could have your regulations and adopt.
And that's actually what I agree with because while a moratorium I think would be great and, and is needed, I think is justified at this point. I have concerns about one, the timeline, we would have at least have a public hearing, so that does push us back a little bit further. Um, and we want to make sure people are adequately, adequately made aware of this. The other concern Mr. Jim mentioned, and I'm pulling, I pulled it up now, that we have to at least say that we explored other courses of action before a moratorium and explain why those courses of action weren't adequate. We haven't until this meeting explored any other courses of action yet, so I don't want to open us up to any potential litigation or legal issues with somebody who can say they signed a lease yesterday and now the city is putting in a moratorium and now wants to sue us. So, um, I think I would be of the opinion for us to go ahead and explore regulations and moving forward with that just so we don't end up spending so much time on a moratorium, which also is just gonna, it's a public meeting, but it's gonna attract, attract a lot more public chatter about the moratorium than the actual intended impact that we would get through the regulations and us making a thoughtful decision about how close proximity they can be or how dense they can be, how far away from a church or school, et cetera. I think that is, I know, I know that's our intent, but I think a moratorium would just cause a lot more backlash and people would lose what we're actually trying to accomplish here.
That makes sense.
Mr. Attorney, my other question is if we come up with regulations, can, those that already have facilities open, can we impose those regulations on them as well?
They would be, um, non, non-conforming uses that would be allowed to continue. We could look at some amortization period where they have to, um, come into compliance by a certain number of years.
And I would strongly suggest those that are near our parks and.
Absolutely.
Schools, something like that, that would be part of our regulations was that amortization, yep.
Another thing I would like to add, are there any regulations on the types of product that are sold? Because I know it's from the pictures, uh, that you had, there were a lot of things in there. And I just happened to be in one of the food stores and they had a regulation about a disclaimer or something about the cigarette products. So I'm just wondering where these products are coming from. And you already stated that there, it's a safety hazard and the children are involved. So is there any way that, anything that or can be regulated about what is being sold in these, um?
So that is out of our wheelhouse, that's under A L E. They would reg- regulate those products that are being sold, yes ma'am. So we would just be, we, we will not go in there and be the tobacco vape police. We would just go in and look at the zoning part of it, the separation part of it, um, the, the things that we have in place, the advertisements, the signs, the window coverage, implementing those things that we already have in our order, forcing those.
Uh, I'd just like to interject too, to add too, and, and I see where, uh, Ms. Seaford was going as it relates to what's been sold. As we look at regulations as it relates to those, uh, vape shops, they're in proximity to the schools, um, or parks, however. I don't know, uh, we may have to go to the legislature or suggest or recommend that that certain products are not sold in the vicinity of those areas as it relates to probably like Delta Eight. Um, you know, vapes, um, you know, hemp that, that's, uh, very, very strong, um, that are some, some, some of our youth get their hands on. That's a conversation that, you know, we, we would have to have with, with the legislature to, to, to make sure that, uh, we're not selling, uh, uh, Delta Eight, like I know that, uh, some of them are, I don't know if they have permits yet or not, but that's something that, um, we, we are, we gotta stay abreast on as well. Um, because that's, uh, a very, very, very bad deal, um, as it relates to setting our youth up for failure off the break. You know, especially if, um, they are actually giving or selling it to, uh, youth.
That's a good point made, um, because recently, um, at J C P C, uh, we did have someone, um, from the crime commission come in. And right now, where it, it, like, things have to be done, um, in Raleigh because we don't have anyone enforcing that, like, we don't have, you know, anyone with A T F. Um, the only thing that they're able to do now is trademark infringement. And, uh, what that looks like is if you notice, you know, vapes now, you know, they're targeting young folk. You know, um, the, the little Rice Krispie treats, um, everything, Fruit Loops, Lays. Um, and the only thing that they're able to, to, to sanction them on, fine them on now is actually a trademark infringement. Um, which is, um, you know, the right time, you know what I'm saying? If, if no one is, is crying loud, you know what I'm saying, for us, you know, to talk to our legislators and ask them, um, to give, um, stricter monitoring of this.
There's a, um, I, I don't think it would take that long to come up with an ordinance. There are some out there that could be used as models. I'm, I'm looking at twenty-twenty-two in Wake County, they, they regulated this, uh, stores that sell primarily tobacco and hemp products from being within a thousand feet of schools, parks, greenways, homes or other similar retailers. So we're not inventing a wheel here.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, good.
So the next question is when do we get a public input?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would say the city of Jacksonville has a, a really good example, I think, aligns similar to like the standards and verbiage that we use in our U D O. Um, and, and what we've talked about tonight, because I know it, uh, it addresses both the density of the businesses, how close they can be to another one just like it, which is a problem we have here when they're popping up right beside or right across the street from each other. But also that distance from a park, school, et cetera. So, um, that was just one example that stood out to me as a good one for us to potentially look at.
Yeah, Burlington has one too, really good. As far as the public, we just got to figure out how to get that out, get it back quickly. Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
All right, thank you, uh.
Jim?
Not tomorrow. Or this week. Okay.
Any more questions?
Nah, uh, any further discussion as it relates to vapes, uh, from Ms. Blunt? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Blunt. Uh, move on to item number four. Request to rename All American City Park to Mary Mack and Buddy Rich All American City Park. Uh, Leon Steele.
Good evening, everybody.
Two minutes.
You guys may remember that the Downtown Kinston Revitalization Design Committee, uh, has taken on a new project, the All American City Park at Blunt and North Queen Street. And one of the things that we've discussed while we, um, were in the development and planning phases for what we're gonna do there, uh, came about right after Buddy Rich's passing. And we thought it would be beneficial in honor of him and also since he is instrumental, uh, at the, back in the day to uh, get us that, help get us that designation of All American City and, uh, implement that, and put that park there. Uh, that we would, uh, request your permission to rename it the Mary Mack and Buddy Rich All American City Park. So we're just, uh, I mean, not doing it like tomorrow, but we'd like your permission to do that, what's, as part of our planning and fundraising process.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Steele. Any, any discussion from the council as it relates to renaming the, uh, All American City Park to Mary Mack and Buddy Rich All American City Park? Any discussion as it relates, or any opposition as it relates to the renaming? None for me. Um, I, I would like to say I think it's a, a great honor for Mayor Rich and Ms. Mary Mack and all they contributed to Kinston and downtown in particular, and with their support of D K. Um, so this is not in any way an aside to them, but I do think moving forward, the city also should consider a streamlined process of how we go about naming facilities. I know it's come up quite a few times in the last few years of requesting name a park or ball field or something after somebody. Um, I think it would be good for us to figure out, you know, what would be our process moving forward for this, just so people know the expectations and know how the process goes. All right. Any further discussion, uh, Leah, as it relates to the?
I have nothing further to add right now, but I will keep you informed about the development.
You know, and, and, um, Councilman Suggs is absolutely right about that, um, because we're in, we all agree. Um, because, you know, Mayor Rich, you know, he led, you know, a delegation, you know what I'm saying? The two times that, you know, we received the honor, you know, Mayor Rich led those delegations. Um, and, you know, he, he brings, I mean, it was, it was him, he was All American City, right?
Yeah.
But the reality of it is, is that, you know, because it's the city's park, um, once again, you know, that opportunity for them to be able to give input. Um, I, I don't think you, you know, you, you cheat people, you know what I'm saying, from that, and so I agree that there should be, you know, a process because actually, you know, I, I would like the council to, to look at, I think, is, is it South Street? Um, across from the music park, you know, and, and thoughts of naming that after Maceo Parker. And so I do think that there should be a process, and so that everyone is aware of the, the process.
That'd be a great tribute for Maceo.
Yeah.
One comment, I think it's a great idea. I was just, just had a question about the names you have, um, Mary Mack Earth and Buddy Rich. I was just wondering about that. Because he was the mayor of our city.
Well, I, she also helped downtown as well. I don't, I don't know, this was all before I got here, but from what I understand, she did things downtown as well in support of, of the revitalization.
I think Ms. Seifert was asking about the order, the order of the name, like.
Oh, why both names?
No, the order.
The order.
The mayor's name coming first.
I think we need to look at the, uh, order.
However, we, you decide to do it, I mean, that's just how I wrote it there.
All right, I, I think the, uh, reversal might be more appropriate, however.
I'm sorry, Ms. Seifert, I misunderstood what you were asking.
Well, maybe I wasn't clear, I was looking at it and I was just thinking, you know, about the formality of it and how it should be done, so I was just asking.
We hadn't gotten to this, to the actual sign, design, yet, development, yet, but yes, I'll make that note and we can, uh, make that change.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you much.
Okay, thanks.
All right, moving on to item number five. Consider adoption of ordinance to amend ballistic vests program budget, P nine one two nine, Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Kinston Department of Public Safety was awarded a grant by the U S Department of Justice Bureau for the twenty twenty-four granting period to purchase nineteen ballistic vests, vests, and this ordinance will amend the already existing project of P ninety-one twenty-nine to include that addition. I'm happy to answer any questions or the police chief, back in.
Well, thank you, Ms. Goodson, and thank you, Chief, for, uh, we got it in time, I do appreciate that. Any further discussion as it relates to the, uh, ballistic vest ordinance change? All right, hearing none, seeing none, moving on to item number six, consider adoption of ordinance to establish fiscal year twenty twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, P nine one five two, Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the, um, City of Kinston Police Department was awarded a grant in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars to be split between the City of Kinston Police Department and the Nor County Sheriff Department, and this, um, ordinance is, is to establish the budget for the project of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
All right, and you guys will split that, is that correct, uh, Chief? All right. Anything from the council as it relates to adoption of the ordinance? Hearing none, seeing none, moving on to item number seven, consider adoption of ordinance to amend transportation infrastructure projects. G nine one four four, Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, back in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, in April, the City Council adopted an operating budget amendment to move the remaining fiscal year twenty-four funds from street construction and reconstruction in addition to street resurfacing and street prevention for the hardy road improvements, um, into the gen, um, transportation infrastructure project. This amendment to the budget is to, um, recognize those funds that have been transferred, so we can appropriate them and begin some more of the street resurfacing.
Infrastructure, thank you, Ms. Goodson. Anything from the council as it relates to the transportation, uh, infrastructure ordinance amendment or adoption? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item number eight, consider adoption of an ordinance to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget amendment, Ms. Goodson.
Thank you again, Mayor. In your packet is an ordinance to amend the annual operating budget. It is specifically dealing with the general fund and the Facilities and Property Management Fund, um, such as build, building demolition for the hotel, Super Eight Hotel for additional asbestos cost. Um, the fund, total funding for the twenty twenty-five comprehensive master plan for the Kinston and Nor County Recreation Department, and also to move funds from the, um, general fund and the Facilities and Property Management Fund for additional street resurfacing to the, um, infrastructure project. And also to do the transfer, um, for the special revenue fund for the purchase of the nineteen ballistic vests, which the, which the city is required to do the matching on that grant. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Goodson as it relates to the adoption of ordinance fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget amendment? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Number nine, item number nine, Granger Stadium Pavilion Canopy Bid, Scott Os.
Hey, Council, hope, uh, council's doing well. Um, tonight, what I have before you is that we started work at Granger Stadium, um, for the upcoming season of, uh, the Bird Dogs. And there's a lot of things going on right now, but what we have for you tonight is we're requesting to award amount, uh, for the left field pavilion, uh, to Churchill Recreation for amount of a hundred twenty-four thousand, uh, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-five cent. Um, we had three bids, uh, for this pavilion, and it's on the left field, it's, it replaces the bleachers, and, um, I'll show you pictures in a second. It was the lowest bid between the three bidders. And we currently have, the renovation project of Granger Stadium is currently, uh, have a hundred and eighty-four thousand left, and those repairs will include painting, upgrading bathrooms, concessions, and other vital areas of the stadium for the upcoming season that, that was agreed upon, um, with the Bird Dogs, so, uh, just to give you a background real quick. Uh, this is the area that we're talking about, the ble, uh, bleachers were removed, um, earlier this year, and, uh, it'll be a concrete concourse area with shade structure, and, uh, there's a scoreboard, a, as you've seen, it's, it just started working today, which I, I'll show you some pictures later. And this would be the shelter right here. Um, it would be a great canopy right here, and it'd be a raised, uh, pavilion on the left and have a bar area right there for spectators. Um, so that's, that's where we're at. Um, and that's where it would, uh, it would go right on that left field pavilion, but, uh, it, it's a great, it's a great area, and it is our best bid we, we got. Any questions from the, from the council? Go ahead.
Scott, it, it, it meets the, um, the specs and the requirements of the lease and has the approval of the Bird Dogs organization.
It does, it does. It's, it's been reviewed by the general manager, uh, Sherri.
Scott, what kind of seating will be up under the canopy? Is it?
Um, it, it'll be bar type seating, it, there, there'll be a, a bar ledge, and then there'll be other sitting areas, uh, more temporary, kind of like, um, you know, kind of like picnic areas, you know, for people to sit, um, get their drinks or get their, their food and go up there and sit and watch the game. Some will be some standing areas for, for drinks, and some will be some sitting areas, kind of high top table, that, that sort of thing, for people to watch the game. And the shade canopy will be a nice addition with the view of the new scoreboard right there, so.
Also, will we have to pay an additional fee to sit in this nice area?
Um, that, I, I don't think so. I think it would just be a, kind of like the pavilion on the right side. It'll be just a common area, you, you get your drink, and it might be crowded, but, you know, that's, that's where all the, I'm sure the, the young kids will want to hang out, all the younger folks, so. Um, I do have our survey up there. I just want to remind the council that we have another, a week left of our survey for our master plan. Um, just wanted to shoot that in there to, to remind the public, um, to take this survey, that we're, we're still needing a lot of, a lot of info on that, so. Any other questions? Uh, yes. This, this was when it was being installed. We have a, a more up-to-date picture, um, that I, I'll, I'll be happy to share with you, but this is, uh, what it looks like as of, I think, last week. This week, we have, have the, everything's working and turned on uh, in, in time for the Freedom Classic, and I do have to remind you of the Freedom Classic, it will be on for the Freedom Classic, um, weather permitting, knock on wood, uh, we're hoping that, that clears up, and, uh, we've already made some adjustments to the game time on Friday at two P M. Uh, but yeah, come out for Freedom Classic, see the new scoreboard in action, and we're gonna be the test subjects, we'll get the bugs out of it, so, yeah, before the Bird Dogs.
There's a time change on that game, is right, correct?
Uh, two P M on, on Friday is the, instead of six P M, that's the only change as of now.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right. I let the gavel strike as the ending of the work session, and then we're gonna roll into the actual council meeting. Um, at the request of, uh, one of our council members. I'm gonna do a recess for three minutes, because it has to go really bad. All right, thank you. We're now in recess. Two eighteen, twenty twenty-five, time is seven thirty-four hours, Madam Clerk. Next, we have the prayer by Councilwoman Barber, Seifert, if you will, when you're ready. I'll stand.
Let us go to the throne of grace. Dear heavenly Father, just want to say thank you for all that you've done for all of us. We are just so blessed to have you in our lives. There are, I know there are times that we get lonely, we might be sick, but who do we call on? We have to call on you because you give us strength. And with your grace and mercy, we are able to go through anything. I would like to also give a special anointing to everyone that's here, especially our councilmen, city, city councilmen, because we need the guidance that you will give us so that we can live Lee Kinston to the place where we want it to be. I would like to also ask for anointing for those who are not here so that they will be able to receive the blessings that you have for them. And also the sick and shut-in, please give them special anointing. So all of these blessings, we ask in your name, because we know that you are the one that is the center of our lives. And you are the one that we always have to give the glory, because without you, we are nothing. We ask these blessings in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pleasure allegiance, United States of America. A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon.
Present.
Councilmember Swenson.
Here.
Councilmember Suggs.
Here.
Councilmember Seifert.
Present.
And Mayor Pro Tim Hardy.
Present.
All president accounted for, like you, Madam Clerk. Under citizen comments, do we have any citizen comments?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Under adoption of the agenda, the council member wished to revise the agenda, the motion to add or delete an item will be entertained before adoption of the agenda. Would there be any? Hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
So moved as their second.
Second.
So moved a probably second, under discussion, under discussion, under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Under minutes, consider approval of the minutes the city council meeting held on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Entertain a motion.
Motion.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
So moved a probably second, under discussion, under discussion, hearing none, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Under consent agenda, items that were talked about or discussed during the work session will be enacted by one single vote. There will be no additional discussion of these items unless, uh, there's discussion from the mayor or council members at the request, in which case the item will be, uh, moved to the action, or moved for action, or moved altogether. And having said that.
What, now, am I, I'm sorry, Mayor, am I correct that for the, the strategic planning, we wanted an opportunity to look at that document once more before we voted on what we would accept?
Yes.
So are we gonna remove that one from this vote?
We can, yes, absolutely, or we can add to it, say, subject to, uh. Yeah, so what we'll do is, what's item number there? Okay, item number one, strategic planning. Uh, subject to uh, further further discussion as it relates to the strategic plan uh, moving forward. Uh, further discussion that will be held by the council, uh, going into further detail on the strategic plan um, before approving the actual uh, strategic plan presented today. Is there any others? All right, having said that, entertain a motion to approve items one through seven, correction, one through eight.
Motion.
Second.
So moved a probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, under action agenda, item number one. All right. Good to see everybody. I'm I'm over here now. All right, so what we'll do is I want to have uh, the AKA's to come over here for stand beside me for just a moment to include Councilwoman Seifert. All right. This is a resolution. I want to read honoring the seventieth anniversary of Zeta Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Whereas the Zeta, y'all look amazing. Whereas the Zeta Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was chartered on March nineteenth nineteen fifty-five in Kinston, North Carolina, fulfilling a long-awaited dream of sorority members in the community and reflecting the organization's commitment to service to all mankind. And whereas the chapter's chartering was made possible through the vision and efforts of members from Kinston, New Bern, Williamson, Robertson, and Morehead City with Mrs. Grace Matthews, Mid-Atlantic Regional Director, presiding over the ceremony held in the homes of Mabel Lindhart and Marilyn Cockdale. And whereas Zeta Omicron Omega has continually provided programs and initiatives to uplift and support the community, including job opportunities, workshops, adult-to-tour programs, clothing, cost, and health services, as well as cultural and social events such as the Biennial Cotillion, which foster education, mentorship, and personal development. And whereas the chapter has earned numerous accolades for its outstanding service, including recognition from the governor of North Carolina and the city of Kinston, and has contributed to the fight against cancer through this, its charitable donation commemorated with a dedicated room at U N C Illinois Healthcare Center, Healthcare Cancer Center. And whereas Zeta Omicron Omega has been a steadfast supporter of Alpha Kappa Alpha's national program targets, including initiatives focusing on education, the arts, economics, health, and the black family. And continues to exemplify excellence through sustainable service. And whereas the chapter has demonstrated its leadership and commitment to the community through numerous accomplishments, including the establishment of a scholarship endowment at Illinois Community College, sponsorship of Relay, of sponsorship of Relay for Life, and the hosting of events such as the nineteen eighty-eight Eastern Carolina Cluster at the twenty-ten Leadership Breakfast during the fifty-sixth, fifty-seventh Mid-Atlantic Regional Conference. And whereas Zeta Omicron Omega has been led by a legacy of dynamic leaders who have contributed to its growth and success, and its members have distinguished themselves as professionals, educators, advocates, and community leaders. And whereas the Zeta Omicron Omega Chapter continues to be a beacon of hope, service and sisterhood, celebrating seven, seven, seven decades of transformative impact in Kinston and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved. Feel it all rise to the sound of the gavel. Now therefore be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Kinston honors and congratulate the Zeta Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of its seventieth anniversary and commend its invaluable contributions to the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the Zeta Omicron Omega Excellence Chapter as a symbol of the city's recognition and appreciation for its enduring service and commitment to excellence. Thank you so much and happy seventieth anniversary, all of you. And if you would like to say something, you can, or we can just take a photo upfront. All right. All right, okay. All right, now having said that, the resolution was read and presented. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
So moved their second. So moved a probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, item number two. The Granger Stadium Pavilion Canopy Bid. Would you like to have any further discussion as it relates to that or?
Just any other questions, um, it's a great project and we're ready to move on.
Okay, all right. Any discussion from the council as it relates to the canopy bid? Hearing none, seeing none, entertain a motion.
Motion.
So moved their second.
Second.
So moved a probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Under appointment, appointments to the Historic District Commission, uh, Director Blunt.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in your package, council, there were two appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. And we would like very much so that you appoint them to that commission.
Thank you, Ms. Blunt. Uh, entertain a motion to approve. So moved their second.
Second.
So moved a probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, Manager Barber, would you like to entertain?
Yes, sir. I just have a few reminders for the council. The Recreation Master Plan, the council's invited to participate. And each of you have a scheduled Zoom meeting for this Friday with uh, Mr. James Ford, I believe, sent the email. So just look out for that. Uh, we also have the auditor's letter in my office. If you did not get, make yourself uh, available to sign it before the meeting, if you could run by. And I will get you to sign that so we can send that off. Also, uh, we've got a pending winter storm. I'm sure everyone knows about it. Uh, tomorrow, city hall and city offices will be closed for nonessential staff. Of course, our, most of our our folks will be out there working the storm, trying to make sure everything's safe as much as possible for our citizens. And the last item, I know uh, the remittance address on our bills has changed. I just wanted to let uh, our customers know that that is exactly where the the checks have always gone. It was just a quite a maze that it went through before it got there. And our finance director spoke to our banking officer. And they were able to work it out so that if we change the remittance address, it'll go directly to their processing center and save a lot of time of our staff and their staff trying to move it around um, to get there. So we're glad to do that. Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Goodson?
Yes, um, this does not replace anyone with the city of Kinston. Um, this is a situation where what happened was it would come to our P O. Box. Our staff would would bind them up, put them in the bank bag. And then the the bank bag was carried to the bank and then they would take them and put them in a FedEx package to the Charlotte remittance address. Now it's just going directly to the Charlotte remittance address. So nothing as far as processing has changed. Actually, what it will do is it should give you, give each person an extra day. It should get, it should get coded to their account a day earlier. Because right now there's at least a one-day lag from the time it gets here to this to to us and then goes to the bank and then goes to Charlotte. So it'd actually be a faster processing time for those individuals who who remit their payments that way.
Ms. Rhonda and Ms. Goodson, if possible, um, could we share that out again um, at some point, I guess, between now and the next billing cycle? Because I did get some questions about it. I'm very grateful for the clarification you provided to council a few weeks ago. Um, and so I was able to answer those questions. But then when I looked on social media and there was just a lot of craziness. So um, the explanation you all provided us was certainly helpful. And again, what you said tonight was helpful. So the public online might need to hear that.
And we'll be glad to share it again, Councilwoman Suggs. But again, it it will be, it's it's typed on the bill. So when you take your coupon and you put it in the window envelope, just like you did before, and all that acts very smoothly and all the online payments and all those things will remain the same.
All right. Any uh, further discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor and Ms. Manager, just want to make sure the Zoom calls, are we still on for Friday for the Zoom calls due to the weather? Possibilities of the bad weather?
Uh, as far as I know, do you have any reason to think differently?
Not unless the, you know, something changes. We'll we'll keep an eye on the and monitor the weather. If it's worse and goes in there, then we'll we'll email you and definitely send you a message. If the weather gets worse, you'll be home already, right?
I I promised I wasn't going Zoom from outside.
Yeah.
I I just have one question to clarify. Now, my Zoom call was at two o'clock, correct? I, that's what I got on my calendar. I just want to make sure. Uh, because uh, they changed it, they changed the Freedom Classic to two. So I.
They ain't gonna play.
Yeah, yes, those are, were scheduled different times. So unfortunately, we can, we can reschedule because I know if you have any issues with with that, with the reschedule, let me know and I'll be able to to talk.
I I just wanted to clarify that because I know we changed the Freedom Classic to two. And I'm I'm uh, participating in that. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we'll, I'll email Jim Ford and.
Okay.
Maybe if you could just email everyone a reminder in case any of theirs changed.
If if there's a conflict, then we'll.
All right, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
So just one thing, um, wanted to thank um, Chief um, for recognizing our school resource officers um, that work in our um, North County Public Schools. Um, you know, just firsthand today, spent a lot of time with um, Officer Rouse. Um, exceptional young officer and, you know, just really pleased um, to see that her work consists mainly of trying to develop healthy relationships um, between herself and, you know, the student population there. So she's an exceptional young lady. Um, just watching her in action, you know, being willing to assist uh, school personnel um, is really beneficial.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Solomon. Any any others? All right. Well, let me say thank you all for uh, your hard work. Thank you for the folks on this side. Um, as always, thank you, Madam Manager. And as we uh, navigate uh, the waters again through this storm, please proceed with due caution. Um, and travel with all, with with due caution. Um, understand that we are in a state of emergency through the governor's office. And um, I think the North County issued a uh, order as well. I did a proclamation and I upgraded it to the emergency order just to comply with what they have going on, however. But um, F Y I, I believe the shelter is open uh, starting tomorrow at eleven o'clock at L C C. Um, so if those that are looking for shelter tomorrow morning at eleven A M., the shelter will be open at L C C. Um, so if you have family members or individuals that are looking to get to a place, they can get there. Uh, thanks to our our North County Emergency Management side, uh, Fire Chief. We do appreciate your efforts and the team over there. Uh, thank you to our public services workers that have been working through all this um, this uh, this stuff. Um, this ice. Uh, please be careful by any means. Um, be safe. Um, but I just want to say thank you all for uh, what you do every single day and we'll get through the next three days or so. Um, but I'm sure that uh, the schools will probably be out the rest of the week. I'm going to guess, I'm going to assume that they probably will be. Um, but please, uh, I believe we may have some closures as well at the city. Um, so we stand by the emails and calls and we'll move accordingly. So having said that. Entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved their second. So moved a probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Life most persistent and urgent question is, what are we doing for others? Dr. M L. K. All those favors say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Scott, Scott, what time is this?